Okay, we're gonna call the panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, December 27th at 7:00 PM for the agenda approval, public comment, approval of the minutes, warrants, mail, town administrator's report, adoption of traffic ordinance, discussion on the adoption of Vermont public records and copy and transmission policy, discussion and adoption of transitional return to work program, consideration of need for an ATV ordinance, RFQ for municipal planning grant is due January 14th, hydro dam, and January 21st lawn mowing, RFPs are due, Vtrans meeting in Bennington on Wednesday, the 18th, report, economic development committee is working on SWOT analysis action item list, they also develop and community business survey, town hall walk choose are on the 28th, RFP is due on February 11th, RFQ for engineering services for landfill due January 7th, plan for forums online, discussion of vote for Mr. Beshi of position of planning commission or any others that might be running for that. Under old business, nothing, new business, approval of fiscal year 18, budget adjustment as requested by outside auditors, need a motion to approve that?
Someone.
I did make amendment to the discussion of vote for Mr. Beshi's position for planning commission because there's, I assume we're gonna be discussing more than just his vote on that, and I said others that have applied because there were some motions that were made also for others, so I need approval with that.
Can we add to the old business, just the, I just wanna add the group email address for website updates.
Great.
You got email.
What's that?
You have copied on my email today.
I did see one, you were asking Chuck about what the next step was.
Anything else to be added? Okay, with those things added, need a motion to approve the agenda is read?
A motion to approve?
With the.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Ronnie said aye, Bob said aye, Jason said aye, and I said aye, and Sue, who's on the phone also, said aye. He's supposed to read them off. Okay, with that, public comments. Any public comment at this time?
I'd just like to see if I could move the discussion over the vote for, or the discussion on the vote for planning commission, but you move that up on the.
That's the town administrator report, if he doesn't mind it being the first item on it, I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with that.
The rest of the board's okay with that?
Yeah, yes.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, thanks Sue. Okay. Okay, with that, being the only public comment this time, approval of the minutes at 12:13:18.
So moved. So the minutes?
Got a motion to approve, got a second. Any discussions on minutes?
Wanna do the minutes again please? Just the motion.
It was second here.
I seconded.
I moved.
You moved it? Okay. Any discussion on? None heard, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ron's aye, Jason's aye.
Aye.
Bob's aye, Sue, have you had a copy of the minutes or are you gonna abstain?
I'm gonna abstain, I read them online and there was a change and I believe the change was made, but I'm still gonna abstain.
Okay, and I abstained because I wasn't there. The ayes have it. Payroll ending 12:21:18, $10,293.37. Payroll ending 12:28:20, $9,212.22. Accounts payable ending 12:21:18 in the amount of $23,456.78. Large items on that was TAM for almost forty, almost five. Okay, that's trash removal from the transportation. Accounts payable ending 12:22:18 in the amount of $231,740. That was for the ballot articles that were voted on last year and approved by the people. Okay, accounts payable ending 2:28:18, an amount of $189,498.83. The large one on that was $163,807.8, it was for blacktop. Much pleasure guys.
We'll approve the warrants.
Second, any discussion? All of those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Sue said aye, and Jackson and Bob, and I'll say aye. Mail.
Mr. Chairman, mail includes Vermont leagues of cities and towns, invitation Thursday, February 14th, local government day at the legislature, if anyone is interested in that. Have the two month sheriff's report, there were eight radar patrols, there was a response to the school for an incident, there were 11 traffic citations, they had a domestic call, served one warrant, they had a secure, one security detail, four property checks, they made one arrest for a suspended license, they did casework and otherwise, other issues that within town doing casework, they had one accident, five complaints, and they issued 20 warnings, they also did one drug investigation. Next item is from our transportation supervisor, sent an email basically reiterating what we had talked about regarding recycling, essentially the recycling market has collapsed, China has put a .5% restriction on anything that comes, paper products, because they were getting, up to 20% of the product they were getting was not usable.
Yeah.
Contaminated, so there's a big scramble to look for domestic uses, prices are gonna go way up, and China is also no longer taking mixed paper and plastic, so.
Same reason?
Same reason, so, you know, we talked about this, where are we gonna get rid of it, a lot of places are just holding it, they're looking for domestic markets, I heard several things that they're trying to do, we also have a problem in Massachusetts, bottling plant, recycling plant closed, so we're gonna have that issue as well, so, Tom is, Mr. Shu, he's doing a great job of staying on top of this and representing us, so. From the listeners, the 2018 equalization study results equals the common level of appraisal in the town collectively went down by 1.04%.
Did it go down from last year or did it go up?
Yes, it went down.
What was it last year?
105.
Okay.
So it went down.
So it went down a tenth of a percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make, draw your attention to, we have several letters reflecting the settlement to keep our transfer station versus investigating to have an outside commercial entity take it over, I've also had several people come in and.
Voice the same.
Voice the same, fairly, a lot of people, so I wanna make sure that you understand that. We have a finance maintenance agreement between the state of Vermont for the Vermont transportation, you approve that, they're replacing new road signs at various places, and this requires, this agreement is the financial agreement, and that would be signed by you, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from the board to sign?
Someone.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Everybody here said aye, and Sue said aye on the phone.
Next item, Mr. Chair, is a liquor license renewal from dryers, I recommend approval.
Get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Everybody said aye here. Everybody has to sign this. Sign it where, on the left-hand side, the other side is disapproved.
Didn't we give Michael the authority to do this if we didn't, if we weren't around?
I think that we have to do.
Yeah, that's one you have to do.
That's the state, unfortunately, we have to do it. You still there? Hey Sue, you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, something was beeping, that's why I'm wondering. You playing with your phone?
I told that you hear the eight week old puppy that's crying in the background.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, you had suggested to bring the matter of Mr. Beshi's position of the planning commissioner.
Yep.
Totally agree with that.
Okay, there was a question on the approval or any of a position, appointment last, I guess was last Thursday or Thursday before?
Yeah, it took maybe the 13th.
The 13th, and basically after a review, what I'm hearing is, is that approval was not done properly.
Correct.
And what needs to happen is, is we need motions again and then approval for the position, this for the planning commission.
Nelson, can you?
Just a minute, when we have a motion, you can talk. Yes, what? What Sue?
Can you explain to me how the, how the motion was done wrong?
Shall I?
Michael can.
Now, what happened was, there were four, four select persons with the vice chair chair in the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I was going by Robert's rule of order, however, Vermont statute requires a majority of the whole body, so there were only two ayes and one nay, and the chair did not vote, it would require three votes.
Okay.
Regardless of who shows up, I had, I had thought that that was under Robert's rule, the majority present, but I was incorrect, and I've confirmed that through our town attorney, and I have copies of the law, where that needs to happen is another motion and another vote, simply put.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, even if it was the other way, from what I'm understanding, there was basically a non-vote and a nay, and then two yea votes, which would have been two and two, so.
So we'd have the third.
So it wasn't even the majority, it was in present that said yes.
Well, just that, I've looked at a lot of them in the past, and it's normally when the chair or the acting chair is in agreement and is casting the tie-breaking vote, or the quorum vote, almost, it's more often than not that they don't say anything, they say, welcome to the board, or the motion carries without saying aye.
Yeah, they abstain.
Well, it seems to me that instead of.
When they don't vote, they're abstaining from the vote.
No, 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 that's not correct.
It'd be a blank vote.
No, 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 that's not correct, when we've approved people in the past, where you had two, two ayes, and then it goes to the chair, because you don't have another aye.
And I.
The chair normally says, welcome to the board, or the motion carries, instead of saying aye, but it's always been, it's always been counted as the third aye vote, so it seems to me that you can't just redo one without cracking open all of the ones we've done for the past several years and go back and do it. Now, I, I agree that we oughta say aye, and that we oughta go forward, that we oughta go forward with, with the process and get it right going forward, but I don't see how you, how you, how you correct it with one and not correct it with, with everybody.
I don't know that you could go back and do that, my, my recommendation is this, Nelson's been doing a little bit this now, but when we vote, all those in favor say aye, and everybody vocalize aye, those dissenting say nay, and the person says nay, I also suggest that the chair decide ahead of time whether he wants to vote or not, he or she wants to vote or not, as a tiebreaker, or if, if that going forward, so it eliminates the confusion and follow, the policy says, and the law says that the board, the chair may vote.
And I agree that that should be the policy, you should get three audible ayes in order for a quorum to exist, and that, that should be the policy, but the only thing I'm saying is, is to go back and correct it means you gotta go back and look at all of the votes that have occurred, because I looked at four or five of them, and of those, four of them were, were the chair being the deciding vote and no audible aye.
And that would be something that you folks would have to agree upon.
Yeah, well, I know one was questioned, and it was to do with Michelle for the planning board, where I didn't say aye, what I did is I nodded to the, to basically down there that I was an aye, and it was questioned at another meeting, and I made it clear that my vote was a yes. So it was me that, that, that put that vote in.
And that wasn't the only one.
Yeah, so basically, usually when that's questioned, what happens is, it comes to the next meeting, somebody brings it up as a question, we usually re-vote, we've done that through the years, if there's a question on the vote, and usually it's never been a controversial.
All right, well, that's fine, we can, we can do that if we want, if we need to.
Hey Bob, just quickly, I watch all those, especially when there's planning commission appointments issue, I guess, I'm not seeing the same thing you are, with the exception of Michelle, could you be specific?
I can be more specific when I go back and review them, but I know that I, when I got the agenda, I went and I explicitly looked at multiples, so I could, can't tell you the date because I didn't write it.
So on various boards, you mean?
It's, yeah, it's been for the planning commission at least twice, and for the other boards as well, and maybe even like an auditor position and those sorts of things.
I have looked at it, and there was actually no indication of an aye from the chair, from Michelle Peckrell or Melissa Collins.
And that was the argument then, so the chair at that point made a statement that he did vote for, I don't know what the chair.
I didn't vote, I hadn't voted previous to that because it was not, wasn't on the agenda, wasn't, we weren't planning on discussing.
So, I think the best way to solve this is, you make your motions, you vote on whoever you're gonna elect, and you move on, that's what you do, democratic process is to vote on.
Does the chair vocalize ahead of time whether they're going to vote?
Well, I can, I'll be, it looks like I'm gonna be voting on this one because it looks like it's gonna be a tight race, so.
So, are we to that point, can I nominate? I'll nominate John Beshi.
We do have several others, but Mr. Chair, I would, I would recommend that in some way, shape, or form, that before the meeting starts, the, the chair says, I'm going to vote or not gonna vote, the perception being that if you vote for one person, you don't vote for another person, that, you know.
Whichever way you wanna run it.
I got a suggestion to make, why don't we determine, when we organize a select board, everybody votes, everybody.
So it is part of your policy?
Period, not, I'll pick one and I'll vote for it, and the next one I won't.
I agree with you.
The policy that you set for the board meetings, you could put that in that policy for all of them, and make it, make it so every board meeting occurs that way, at the moment it's not that way because the statute doesn't say it.
It seems to me that this board, a couple weeks ago.
Can you guys identify?
Oh, my, my name is Fred Miller.
Thank you.
It occurs to me that, two weeks ago, this board appointed somebody to the planning commission, all right, and I don't believe the board has, has the authority to remove a planning commission member once appointed.
The board has the right to remove all planning commission.
Oh really?
If they wish.
By statute?
By statute.
Okay.
At any time without cause.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that, but what really happened last meeting was that, from what I saw on the video, was that there was two that, one that voted a nay, two that voted aye, and one that didn't vote, which would be an abstention in my mind, that's the way I always looked at my nay vote, so basically what would happen is, it'd be two and two, means not a vote.
I watched the minutes from, I watched the meeting from, was it July 19th, when Megan Randall was, was appointed, and you, before the appointment, you were explaining to another select board member, who was asking about how that vote occurs, how the chair's vote occurs, and you, you expressed to that person that, when you, when you, even though you don't vote, that it's implied that you voted, you voted affirmative for that.
No, that was the one for the Michelle, that was for the Michelle thing, which I said I did vote yes for because I nodded down there, no.
You explained, you explained verbally.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at.
Even though you didn't vocalize, verbalize it.
I, I did a yes vote at that time, that doesn't mean I do a yes vote at every time, I can abstain from them, I cannot vote at all.
Looking at the minutes, minutes going back, it's always reflected that the chair person's vote, the vote comes out as unanimous.
And I'll say unanimous when that occurs, as Linda can tell you more than once, I've stated where I haven't voted on something.
You've stated.
Clear and loud.
This has never come up before, why is that, when these types of, these types of events have occurred?
Because what happens is, people get a controversy outside, they bring it to the board, the board has to look at it and review, and make a decision on what to do, and then we have to follow the proper rules, the proper rules in this situation, from what I see is, you got a two and two vote, we're gonna ask for motions, we'll get motions and people will vote, and if I can get three votes without me voting, I'll abstain, but if they get that, and they need a third vote, then I won't be voting, all right, so that's where we're at, and we're gonna.
Harry Percy Jr., is it possible going forward, as a suggestion, everyone votes is what Ron was saying, except for when Robert's rules requires a chairperson be the tiebreaker, and have that put through all policies for all commissions?
Well, that's, that's one way to put it, what Ronnie is saying is, have the chair vote every time, no matter what, what you're saying is only vote to break a tie, that's up to the board.
No, no, I said, only where Robert's rule states you need to break a tie, then you'll hold back.
Well, that would be, I don't think I ever have to break a tie by the rules.
Robert's, Robert's rule is quorum present.
I understand it, but there is a time during certain processes where it states that the president or head person abstains until, for a tiebreaker in there.
He, I think the verbiage is may vote.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm doing it long enough that I know that, I probably abstain from more votes than I voted for through the years, the real thing is, is that I think Ronnie's right, that's the way he wants to do it, and there'll be a new board sitting here in March, and they can set policy any way they wish at that time, they could actually take and set policy right tonight if they wish, they could take a mo, you know, basically say that they're looking for that, and then vote on it, and have the board follow their, but they'll have to do that with the rules of order for a board.
It would be in addition to our policy.
Yeah.
Simply put.
Yeah.
I would suggest going forward also that this board does not appoint anybody to anything if not all five members are present.
I, I agree with that, that, that makes sense, and.
No more of this, like waiting for somebody's out and jumping on the opportunity to, to vote in your friend.
Yeah, and I've done that in the past, I've requested that in the past.
I don't think anybody's voting in their, that's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous, Jason, it is, it is ridiculous.
It's not ridiculous, it actually, I don't think it's voting in a friend, I think it's things like, when you wanna make it, you wanna fill the position, so he votes with the one that has two, and that would have gone differently had all five of us been here, because then, then there would have been two twos, and you would have been forced to choose.
I would have been forced to choose, and that's just what usually happens sometimes, luckily not all the time for me, but, but the bottom line is, is that our goal is to appoint people to boards, our goal is to try to get people to apply for boards, because we need to appoint people and we need to move forward with this, and with that said.
Nelson, first of all, Rosemary's had her hand up for about 10 minutes.
I can't see you, go ahead.
And I'd like to speak to if I can.
Yep.
Okay. My, my comment, because of the confusion here, is along with Bob said, you know, one way to do this is to go back and look at the other appointments, and it seems to me that because it's been unclear how you vote, because it's so subtle, that, and, and also given the fact that since this board has been in place, there are citizens watching, and it seems that there are some people who are ready to jump when something doesn't appear to be quite right, and immediately inform the secretary of state, and then the board has to then check with lawyers, how do we handle this, that I think it would be in the best interest of this board to go back and look at those, and at the next meeting, just revote on each position and confirm that they are appointed, just like you're gonna do tonight.
It'll make a difference on which board those people are on, the planning commission, as I said, we can remove people, but the DRB, we're not allowed to because it's quasi-judicial, and it, and once they're appointed, they're appointed, and we can't remove them until their term is up and then decide to appoint someone else, there's lots of rules and regulations that go for each board, so it's very hard to go back and say, we're gonna look at each one of these and then try to make a decision, geez, maybe I didn't like that guy on that board, and look, it doesn't look like it was voted right, that's not gonna happen, not why I'm sitting here, I think what we got is a question of a recent vote, and we're gonna deal with it, now if this had been brought up after five meetings had gone by, my comment would have been the same, hey, look at, you appointed them, they're there, leave them alone, but I think at this point, because we have the controversy we have, we as a board need to correct that by making a motion and moving forward, now Sue, you wanted to speak, go ahead.
I do, I, I think going forward, any board, new or otherwise, we need to look at the policies on how we appoint people, I've always felt that we need to look at the policies, whether, whether people need to bring in resumes, or just the way that we appoint people, we need to follow the policies correctly every time, I think you're right, Nelson, it was brought up now, I think we do need to do a new vote, I also feel going forward with a new board, that the chair should vote every time, that's my opinion.
Okay. John?
John Beshi, I just had, I, I agree with Bob, Bob was saying, at that point where the vote was done, Jason looked at me and said, so you're, you know, pointed to, to the commission, I went and said in one of the, one of the meetings, and taking that away now is, is no better than having taken away Sue's position, being voted on without discussion, or any other ones that have happened in the past, I understand and I agree, going forward, having a set policy, but to go back and re-vote on it now, I think is wrong.
Okay, any other comments?
One comment in closing here on my part, we have a hard enough job getting people to come for, come forward, I don't believe that they should have to bring a resume, but I do believe that it should be put out in adequate time, so that the people, either put it in the paper, put it in the stores, whatever you do, put it out, so everybody who has an interest in this kinda stuff can put in for it, that's all I got to say.
Okay, we have one more.
Along those lines, Ronnie, that's a great point, we had two people approach this board on the 13th for two positions, this board that night thought they were giving one person two positions, actually his third position, and John, you know this is nothing personal, I like John, they basically told one person, go on home, we don't need you, you guys couldn't figure out a way to put two volunteers in two positions that night?
Well, Mike, I made a motion to vote for Rosemary.
No, I know you did.
And I, and I made the motion because we had two positions and two people, why not use both people?
Just common sense, I think, I think it's embarrassing that we're in the bind we're in right now, putting John on the spot here, Rosemary.
Well, one thing too is, I was here, I believe in Rosemary was not here during.
I was out of town.
Doesn't, should have no bearing, two positions.
Okay, well.
The thing about the positions is, did we have two positions to fill?
Yes.
Sure did, economic committee and planning committee.
Two different places, two different spots.
Yes.
Maybe one person, maybe one person just wanted to be on one, one of them committees, or one of them planning thing, that, that then, then it kinda eliminates the two-position thing, as far as I'm concerned.
I don't understand that at all.
Wrong, wrong answer question.
You don't, it's pretty simple, if you only got, if you got two people putting in for the same spot, I mean, and.
You got two, you got one person putting in for two, one person putting in for one, you could do a little combination of both of them, easily, easily.
Okay, I.
We don't have any volunteers, Ronnie, you, you brought it up, we have 14 openings, we don't have people beating the door down, maybe some of these people will come forward now and volunteer.
Maybe they won't.
It's critical, you can't tell them when to go home, especially somebody who's done as much for.
Maybe if they do, they'll be put through the same crap that John's been put through twice now, trying to get a point into the planning commission.
All right, I'm gonna close it off, and all discussion should be addressed to the board, not to other people, okay, I need a motion to appoint a planning commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Beshi to the planning commission.
Get a second?
I'll second that.
Second motion for that?
I'm making a motion to appoint Rosemary.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I'm, John was, motion was made first, so I'm gonna ask for a vote for John first, all those in favor of John say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Close.
And I'm a nay. Calling the second motion. All those in favor of appointing Rose Marie, say aye.
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 Nays?
Nay.
Abstentions or nays? You're a nay or an abstention?
I'd be a nay, I guess. I already voted for one guy. Can I vote for two?
Well, the other one failed, so this is a second...
That don't make any sense to me, folks. We're racing around the circle here.
This is the second motion. So, yes, you get to vote on the second motion as well as the first motion.
I'm just happy to see somebody on the board, so I don't care.
I'm glad, I'm glad we have two. Okay, so Rose Marie has been appointed by the select board to be on the planning board.
Good job, guys. You all did a great job.
Okay.
You did a good job. You running again?
Nope.
That's good.
Okay. With that, when you're talking about people running, I will be, my term will end in March because I'm not going to fill out my term through March of next year through... So I'm letting people know, so if they take out a petition, please do for select board. Fred, if you're interested, there's an open seat. Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I make a suggestion that you consider modifications as suggested to the policy to reflect anything that you choose regarding voting and five people, five members being present, those types of things.
My belief is, based on the new board you're going to have here, and most of them will be new members, that's the time to bring that up so those members can make the decision on how they wish to do that. Okay? Because at this time, I would vote no for any change. And it's better that you do that with a new board, not me.
Just make one comment.
Quick.
Okay. It just seems that people that aren't running for these board positions, there's a fundamental reason for that, because it's viewed as being, you know, you really have to know somebody already on the board and it's not so much your qualifications.
I don't agree with that at all.
No?
Kind of just happened.
No.
Kind of just happened, didn't it?
It doesn't, she reined on her own before. It doesn't make a difference. These seats are open. Anyone that wishes to make out a form, please do, and I urge you to do that.
What I was referring to is, he was already appointed, so now you guys decide, you guys, you know...
He wasn't appointed. You guys can believe your half, the other people will believe their half. We just made a motion that put it official who's appointed. And I'm going to end that conversation because it's over. Now, there'll be more open seats, I'm sure, and there'll be more appointments that are going to occur next year. If you look at the appointment list, you'll see how many are ending next year. If you wish to apply, please do. We want as many people as possible. From what I understand, John, is on the economic committee and you're also on the DRB. Rose Marie is on one thing, the planning commission.
It's fine, huh?
And basically what we've done is we've got two citizens involved in town public business because of that. Otherwise, we'd only have one in all the three. Come on, look at me. How many things have I been involved with through the years because people don't want to run? Please run. Take out papers.
I just want to make the comment that it's more than just filling seats. It's making sure that the people of Pownell are ideologically represented and that the representation on the board is a good cross-section of ideology. And that's what I think we got with John. It's not just about rewarding volunteers who want to do things for their town. It's about making sure that the citizens are represented.
Make sure you tell the camera to take out papers of all types of citizens so that they'll run and we will have representation from everywhere. That's what I'm trying to do.
No, I get it. I get it. But that's, I'm countering the argument that it's just about making sure that volunteers get evenly distributed. It's about representing the people of Pownell in an ideologically balanced way that represents their actual viewpoints.
And I think we've doing that. If you look at the members of the planning board, you've got both sides. You look at the DRB.
Well, I'm just explaining my vote. It's not about, it's not about making sure that you've got two people, make sure that they both get on a board. That's not what it's about. It's about making sure your citizens are represented. However, that does mean that we can reasonably disagree about what that representation is. But it's not about just filling seats. That's where I take a little issue.
And I'm not taking, and I didn't say that either. Don't put words in my mouth. I told people that wish to run to get out there and run, and I hope that they are mixed.
Well, I hope they do too.
And I'm hoping that there are both sides, as we just appointed to the planning board, someone that has a different opinion than some of the planning board members that are on there at the moment. And that's what we're trying to do, is to make sure that all voices are heard of the people. It's not just all one side. The select board is the same way.
No, I get it. The planning commission becomes more problematic because if you have a three-two split on, hypothetically, if you had interest in the planning commission and lots of people who wanted to be on it, and you had a three-two split for 10 years, you'll get a nine-zero split on the planning commission from an ideological standpoint. And that's what we need to make sure that we're representing ideology as well as...
And I agree with that, and I have agreed with that. In fact, I've done what I can actually to do that on many committees, if you look.
If you have somebody in them.
Jenny Dewar, former member of the select board. I have heard it said that we want warm bodies looking positions because so few people run. I certainly was part of unanimous votes to put people on that I had never met in my entire life. And I just heard someone else say, yeah, they are interested, they have done this and that for the town, and I've taken that in good faith. I think we have a pretty good cross-section in the entire town office, but we have positions that's never got filled because people didn't put their names forward. And if you put your names forward, you're going to get on a commission or a committee because they're...
I know one thing that this...
There's no partiality to how people vote.
I know one thing that we have not done as well as we could. I know that you resigned one woman that was off the board. I know we had another woman resign from the planning board because of the way we're pushing things. And there are women that have chose not to run, that were going to run for different positions, applying for economic committee and so forth. We as a board need to make sure that we're as diverse as possible on these boards, not only in the views of someone, but the opinions of people from different gender makes a big difference in how things get done. And we need to make sure that happens. That's one of the things that I'll tell you, and it's been a little upsetting to me this year to see how many people we've given away of the opposite sex.
Thank you.
And that's where I'm going to leave it. We're going to move on.
That is entirely true, and that was part of it.
Can you take up from there? Michael, go with your next item?
Next item. Request a vote on the traffic ordinance.
Has everybody had a chance to look through the traffic ordinance?
I did.
Are you ready to vote on it? Then I'll take a motion if people are ready to vote on it.
So moved.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
She voiced it.
She voted aye. We had three ayes here also, Sue. Ron, Bob, and Jason voted aye. I abstained.
Mr. Chair, at this point, because we were going to discuss a recommendation or discussion on ATVs, respectfully request I discuss that now because of the traffic study. But my recommendation is to just leave ATV as a section of the traffic ordinance. It's already addressed in the traffic ordinance. It was a recommendation for an entire ATV policy, which I think may be excessive, and I...
This is the new statute for ATV that was passed by a legislative body?
Yes. It's a recommendation. It's a kind of a boilerplate ATV regulation. It's already addressed in our traffic ordinance, and I would recommend that we just leave it that way.
Okay. And people should be aware that this board at one time, and it's still in effect, has approved certain roads for ATV use in town, and they're in use at the moment.
Correct.
So nothing changes?
Nothing changes.
Okay. Thank you.
We had for your consideration a policy, public record inspection, copying and transmission policy, to align with state law. In addition, everything will be documented. Someone wants Freedom of Information Act, they want documents. We identify whether it's a document that can be given. We make the communication to the person who's requesting the documentation, timeframe by which they would get it, the media by which they would get it, and really tightens up because we went through a bunch of this in the past several months. And this was for your consideration, and I would respectfully request a vote.
Has everybody had a chance to look at this to the point where they're ready to make a vote?
Yes.
If I have, I'll take a motion.
Motion we approve. Second.
Any further discussion? Sue, what's your vote?
I vote yes.
Ronnie?
I vote yes.
Bob?
Uh, yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I'm an aye.
Mr. Chair, would you pass that for signatures, please? Next item I have for you is Transitional Return to Work Program. This was for your consideration for the past several months, essentially for everyone here. It gives us the ability for a person who's injured on the job, come back to work in a different capacity. In military, we call it light duty. So if they're with a physical restriction and there is possibility of work for that person under those restrictions, they can come back to work.
Is this in relation to the workman comp and health inspections?
Yes, it is. And I would request a vote.
Has everybody read the Transitional Return to Work Program document? If so, and they wish to make a motion, please do.
So moved.
Oh, second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any...
I've got one question on that.
Yes, sir.
If a person has been, you know, he had to have qualifications to get the job, he or she, whatever. All right, so if they're severely limited, severely now, I mean, if they can do most of it or something, or can get back to perfect health, I'm all for this thing. But if we're going to keep somebody, you know, I'm a hard ass, I guess, we're going to keep somebody till they retire and they can only do half the work, I don't think it's fair to somebody else.
Sir, with this, I completely agree with you. What this does, it's transitional. So if someone gets injured, what it does is, under the guidance of an occupational health doctor, recommend that that individual come back and do meaningful work. We don't have to put them back in the... We would have to have something tangible for them to do. And this is part of occupational, it's completely transitional. This doesn't mean that we would keep somebody on the job if they had a debilitating injury. That is a workman comp issue. So you're absolutely correct. Nobody's going to be on this for long term.
Okay. Sue, did you have a comment?
Yeah, that was my question that Michael does the answer. I agree with Ronnie. We don't want to put somebody back on that's permanently disabled and can only do light duty.
That's absolutely not what this does.
Okay.
And the other thing people need to be aware of, what you're doing is you're helping a person get off workman comp and come back to work because your workman comp insurance and rates that go up that you pay in your budget are due to the fact of how people, how long people are out and how long they're on workman comp and how much money they collect.
You're also helping us to carry the workman's comp.
That's right.
If we can get them, as long as they're effective at something, I got nothing against that. I'm all for that.
Yeah, well, I think that's what the answer was.
So if, I heard the same concern, and it's a valid concern.
It is.
Is it, if this could be interpreted that way, would it be okay to put in an explicit statement that says that's not what it will do? You know what I'm saying? If somebody's permanently disabled...
Actually, it does, sir. Objective of the program is to help injured employees safely recover from workplace injury by helping them progress from transitional work duties back to their normal duties whenever possible.
Right, but that's not an explicit statement saying it is not for this other purpose. The other purpose being if you're permanently disabled, you're not using this policy. So if it's, that was the concern. Sue, I guess my question to you is, that was your concern and Ronnie's concern as I heard it, correct?
Right.
And I think it was a valid concern.
Keep somebody that's permanently disabled from what I'm just like duty.
Right, so that doesn't, it explicitly says what the policy is intended to do, but it doesn't explicitly prohibit its use in another way. I just want to make sure that if that was the concern, can we just put something in it that just explicitly says...
Do whatever your pleasure is, sir.
It sounds to me like you want to table this. You want to retract your motion and table this, or do you want to go ahead and vote on it? That's what I'm trying to understand because of the discussion. I got three members now discussing a concern with this document. And my, and with that concern being done by three members, I guess I'm looking at, should we not go back to the drawing board and look at this a little more? And Bob, I agree with you because one of the things is, you made a statement that it's stated in here to mostly come back, or it was implied not fully come back. And that kind of concerned me when that was read. I think we should be, our goal should be to put person back to full employment. And it might say simply that.
Mr. Chair, with respects, it says transitionary, temporary, it's replete throughout the document, that it's temporary and transitional. This is under the guidance of an occupational health doctor. I mean, it may have to be quite a stretch.
Well, I realize it's quite a stretch, and I know that this is perhaps a different example. But there's temporary, there's temporary halfway housing in Bennington that has been occupied by the same families for multiple generations.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not how you, it's not, it's not that it says temporary and that the purpose is clear. It's that it's, it is explicitly prohibited to use it for a different purpose. That's actually what I'm going for.
Well, it could say something, yeah, it could say something as simple as, you know, to come back under the transitional within a reasonable time. If that doesn't happen and you can't do your job, you know, we as a board could take action. That's I guess what you'd want.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here with my hand up.
Yes. You got to speak up, Sue. Sue, go ahead.
I agree with Ronnie and Bob is not, never to rush a policy unless we're all in agreement on it. And my example of this particular one would be like if somebody sprained an ankle and he can't dig a ditch or something, but he can drive a truck, you say it's a left ankle, and he can still drive a truck in the clouds. No, I think that's okay. But if he can't do hard labor, you know, that's the type of light duty I'm thinking. But I think we should be clear because we don't want to go back to policies that we make now and not think it through.
So put it off for one.
So I guess what I'm saying is we should table it and think it through.
Okay, okay. I'm going to have you, you're going to rescind your motion?
I rescind it.
You rescind your motion?
I rescind.
Okay, and you making a motion to table this until a future date?
Yes, we don't have to motion for that, right? We just agree.
Well, if you table it, it means it will come back.
And I'll make an explicit statement and bring an email to you for the next meeting.
Okay, good. That's all I need, just so it doesn't get lost.
I have some information. Misable planning grant money has been released. RFQs are due on January 14th. I've had one returned already. And wherever that lands, I've already talked to the treasurer, we're going to move the money over. And as soon as we get somebody on board to help with that, I'll come to you for an appointment. As we know, the Hydro Dam, there's damage done by Pan Am Railroad. And I went down and met with Mr. Scully and observed some of the issues. And you had indicated that state transportation now is going to be contacting the railroad.
I have not heard back from the Department of Transportation. I did contact them and they're supposed to call me back. I talked to one first to do with the transportation for automotives, but they transferred me over to the railroad guy, and I'm waiting for his response. I'm actually going to forward him the pictures you guys just sent me.
Perfect. Thank you very much. RFPs for lawn mowing are due on the 21st of January. No one has submitted. I encourage someone to take out those and bid on those.
Can we talk to the person, this person that was doing it before, was it that he couldn't do it because he wasn't making enough money, or did he just decide to retire from mowing?
He said that he's retiring. And he's a very young man. I don't know what, that's up to him, but he said he's retiring. So I put it out for bid, and no one's responded to it yet. I've sent it to some services around, hopefully get some of them to bid.
Okay.
It's a tough time of year to...
Yeah.
To be looking for lawn mowing bids.
Yeah, a lot of them have gone to Florida.
Vermont Transportation met in Bennington. You were there, Mr. Chair. And he talked of one-click-one-call program, spoke with our health clinic. One of their major concerns is people not being able to get transportation to and from. I contacted these folks, and they're going to work out a program whereby people can get... transportation to the doctors. Economic Development Committee's working on a SWOT analysis. That's a system whereby you look at strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats to economic development in the community and transfer that into actionable items. And one of the things that we're doing, my assignment is to drive around and talk to businesses and say, what can we do to help you? What can we do to make things easier for you to do business? And I'll be compiling a list that go back to both Economic Development Committee as well as you folks. And one of the things we're gonna be doing is putting applications and permits online, fillable forms online, where you can take out a permit, pay for it, and have that process started online so you don't have to come to Town Hall. I've requested all boards to take a good look at their permits, make sure fees are appropriate, and then get them back to me and we'll have that done.
Yeah, the zoning permits are online, driveway permits are online, but all of those can be reworked, I think, personally.
Yeah, and you have a nice list of all fillable forms, areas where mandatory to fill it out that are posted that we know what they have to do. And I've got access to the website, Vermont Economic Development. I can now post, with permission, commercial buildings that are empty and put them online on the state so that more people, exposure, more people can look at those buildings and perhaps make decisions to purchase and open businesses.
Are you talking to the owners of those buildings before you post them?
Absolutely, that's what I just said. Yeah, with permission.
Yeah.
So that just came through. I've only talked to one individual, so I'll be, if anybody has a vacant property, vacant building, and they want that posted...
I don't know if you've spoken to the Mac Molding yet, but that...
I speak with that gentleman after the first of the year.
Oh, you got him?
I got an appointment with him to speak with him first.
Good, because that's...
I got an appointment, yeah, with the Chamber of Commerce, regional Chamber of Commerce.
Good.
Quick question on these.
Michael, this is not town-owned property?
No, it's not town-owned property. It's individual commercial properties at their, at their behest. I wouldn't do that on my own. The idea is to get exposure for people trying to sell their properties. So we align somebody that's interested in starting a business, align them with a vacant property that takes, fits the bill for them, just makes that process easier, trying to get people, business going here in the community.
On our website or...
No, this is Vermont, Vermont Economic Development.
Okay.
So it's a statewide site.
Couple of questions on that. Firstly, you said that you've been going around asking businesses what we can do to help them.
Yes.
But you were also developing a community business survey.
Yes, they are.
And I think there's two different approaches, right? There's...
Yes, separate approaches, right. One of the gentlemen is going to be devising a survey that we'll both mail out, well, probably not gonna mail out, but we're gonna put online and hopefully get some input. They're developing that now. That's part of the actionable items under that SWOT analysis.
Okay. And just, just for everybody's identification, not that anybody cares what I think, but I did read a preliminary version of that SWOT analysis and it was exceptionally good.
Yeah, we got a sharp crew on that Economic Development Committee. Tomorrow will be walkthroughs of the Town Hall property. I've had a number of architecture and engineering groups call. Throughout the day, we'll be walking over to the property and they'll be looking at it. I anticipate a lot of bids. Request for qualifications for engineering services due January. If you recall, this is for the Transportation West property. That would be part of the revolving loan to mitigate that. We hire an engineering firm and apply for the revolving loan grant, which the engineering firm has to help fill out the form, quite frankly, because there are engineering questions that have to be answered. And that $53,000 would be put to the side as part of the larger part of the grant, wouldn't pay that for up to five years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's usually the way they manage. Okay.
And, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, can I chime in with another question? On the, on the RFP itself for the, for the Town Hall, is that gonna be posted to our website?
It was.
It is, or?
Yeah.
Okay, if it is...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You scared me.
Maybe I missed it, sorry.
Yeah, frightened me there.
And then I did, I wasn't at the sixth meeting, but I did view it online, on July 6th, I'm sorry, on December 6th. And we talked about, it sounded at the beginning of the meeting that we were still considering renovated properties and things of that nature, more innovative solutions that might come in a little cheaper, which I know aren't apples-to-apples comparison, but to me, it's not really about apples-to-apples, it's about saving Pownell residents' money. So, and it wasn't very clear by the time you got to the end of the meeting of whether or not we were still considering renovated properties or, because I know we had a couple on the table.
Answer is yes. I've received one already. I think it's appropriate to bring them forward when the time comes. There's going to be another one, recommendation to renovate the church. So those are two that I do know of that might be coming across, but yes, the answer's yes.
And then I know we can't do anything on it until after the vote, but whatever, whatever the people vote for in March, when do we secure the funds? Do you know?
We have a timeline. I don't have the RFP here, but there is a timeline for consideration, hiring of the firm. And then they put forward a presentation and materials that we take to a town vote. So that's, that's all part of its own. We'll have a town vote in March.
And the reason I ask is, is just the cost of money. I mean, interest rates are all over the place right now, and that's gonna, that's going to change substantially, whatever bonding we do.
Yes, it will. And it also has to do with, we have the two audits that we're finishing up, and that has a great deal to do with that, too. The vote's in March. There's not much we can do with the interest rate.
Right, because then the, the building is then over, over 18 months or something, correct?
Oh, yes.
Right, and so at some point, we have to secure that funding.
Actually, yes, after we award the contract, we'll be going for a bond.
Okay.
Which will require a town vote.
Town vote.
Right, right.
Which, when we say, when we say, award the contracts, we basically award the contract with the condition that the people approve the bond.
Correct.
Right, right. So my, my question was hypothetical, that the bond is approved in the March vote, when do we secure the financing?
In March, as soon as I get the vote, we're gonna go to the bond bank.
Yeah, you go to the bond. Once they say yes, you can go.
And we'll have the materials ready to go for that. I've already spoken to the president of the bond bank.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay, moving on, you got one?
And that's it.
I got one more for Bob, though. Group website.
Oh, right. So I, just the sooner we can get the group website, particularly for the, for the website updates, it just makes things a little easier. One is, I think the select board, I think we've already decided, really ought to be informed of any website updates that occur. So select board members would be a member of that group. I think we've already sent it out. And then, and then, of course, the webmaster would be on that. And that way, you're keeping the select board, the elected body, informed of any, any changes there. And for whoever continues to administer the newsletter going forward, it makes things a little bit easier. You don't have to fish through and worry about whether or not you missed something. You have a definitive list of all of the changes that have occurred.
I couldn't really hear that. Can you explain to me what you're talking about again?
Oh, it's a group email address that we had talked about before, Sue. It's...
Group email address, okay. I thought you were talking about the website.
Well, kind of. It is, it's a group email address so that, instead of, so it's one email address, and it would be something like websiteupdates@townofpownell.com. But that...
So when Jenny changes, when Jenny changes something on the website, we get a copy of it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, well, we get a copy of the request. We don't actually get a copy of confirmation that she's made a change, and I'm not looking for that. I'm just looking to make sure that the select board is informed of all requests to the website.
Okay. Is it one direct person that we're sending requests to for the website, or is it just Michael and Linda that are contacting Jen?
It's generally me that contacts Jen. I have, I know at one, at one point, I did go to the board. There was a request for an outside entity to have a link on our website, and that was denied them. I understand what the gentleman is getting at. We talked of group email. That's not happened yet. I did send a follow-up email to our IT person to get on that. And I will make doubly sure that if I post something, that I'll get it to you.
And to be clear, I think there's a very, it should be a pretty short operating procedure, but it should be anybody in town that's requesting a, a website update would have to use this address. And then we'd have to tell Jen, or our webmaster, that if she needs clarification on anything, she's to use reply, not reply all, because of the open meeting law issue. But other than that, I think it's a pretty short, it's a pretty short operating procedure.
I don't understand that because why, why are we all being copied on it when Michael is giving Jenny the information, and why does the board need to be copied on that? Isn't that kind of micromanaging a little bit?
I don't think so. I think, I think town communications is extremely important, and I think the board ought to know what's being, what's being requested to be placed on the website and what gets placed on the website. I don't think, we don't have to do anything with it. I mean, if you didn't wanna do anything with it, you could ignore it.
I think, I think the key here is that it's informative to the board, it's not something that the board is gonna send back anything to. If the board's gonna discuss something on the website, it's gonna come here and discuss it, because we're not allowed to have discussions otherwise. So basically what it does is it informs the board that something is changing on the website, and if they feel it's worth discussion, they'll see that it gets put on the agenda for the meeting where the board can then discuss it.
All right, all right.
So it's not, it's not a communication...
I just don't wanna pick a communication between Michael and Jenny.
It's not a communication between the board and Jenny by individuals on the board. This is a, a way of us knowing what's occurring on the website, and we can discuss it as a board.
Okay. So when the town clerk puts something on the website, we will get a copy of that as well, like votes and everything else?
Yes, and if you would like, if you would like, I can show you how to set those up for auto delete.
Well, the, yeah. But basically what you're doing is, let's face it, even what Julie sends, I assume is being put up by Holly when she sends it to Holly? Or does Julie have the right to put something on the website right up?
Jen sends it, as far as I know, Julie sends it to a website to put up.
And they put it up. So, so it's not that Julie needs to tell us, the website person will tell us if there's a change.
She does.
Yeah.
Yeah, she'll contact me, and particularly if anything she thinks might be questionable, contact me.
Yeah, but for what Bob's asking, it would just come and say, say that was the case, and it would say, March 3rd's votes have been posted.
So just to clarify, the town clerk, the listers, planning board, anybody that wants something on the, on the website, give their information to Michael, and he talks to Jen Holly about it, and we will get a carbon copy of it.
If that's the current process, if anybody sends something directly to Jen Holly now, and I don't know what the current process is, then they would send it to websiteupdates@townofpownell.com or whatever.
Yeah, and then we would decide.
Yeah.
I'm asking what the current process is, is that correct?
Oh, that I don't know.
No, current process is, town clerk posts stuff on the website. I get told about it, generally. If there's something that she thinks is, is to be questioned, she'll contact me. That's how it works now.
So she posts directly, or does she send it to?
She sends it.
Okay, that's the, that's an important distinction.
Yes, big. I think that's, that's fine, because if we get notified...
Yeah, you can ignore the notification, or you can read through it.
Yeah, and if it's something you need to talk about, put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else to do with the website? Discussion, Bob?
That's all I have.
Okay. Who will have fiscal year 18 budget adjustments?
Gentlemen and ladies, the auditor requested that any, any loans be separated by, for example, if we have a truck loan, they all be separated out and, under both principal and interest payments. And I'll go through these, it's just a bookkeeping that the auditor would like us to do. The first would be a motion to approve the road fund budget adjustment by outside auditors, separating equipment and interest. And it includes tandem truck payments, backhoe payment, and equipment maintenance. The total was $28,925. That's gonna be separated out into three separate line items and further subdivided into principal and interest.
And that's what's shown on this...
Correct.
...document that we received?
Yes.
What's your pleasure, guys? Do you wish to move on the budget adjustment asked, requested by our auditor?
I make that motion, move on the budget adjustment requested by your auditor.
For the road department.
For the road, yes. Separate and separate from the interest.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Sue, what do you say?
I'm a little confused, I'll say aye on that one, but didn't we just skip one of the agenda items?
No.
I don't think so.
Plan for forms online with the plan for...
He already talked about that.
Yes, I did.
He already talked about it, earlier in the discussion.
Okay. All right, I guess I missed that. I was just hoping that things like applications for voter registration and everything would also be online, so people who are getting ready to run for office in March can go online and download a form.
That's perfectly fine. That would be definitely one of the items. We'd have a direct link to all our forms and, and applications.
Okay. Sorry about the confusion.
No, no, that's quite all right.
It's okay.
The second motion would be approve wastewater treatment fund, O and M budget adjustment for Dodge truck. That's $590 to be separated out, and I request a vote on that.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, and this is the budget adjustment as recommended by our auditor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
This one is for fiscal year 19 road fund. Need a budget adjustment for tandem truck interest payments and principal. And this is for the 19 budget.
As recommended by our auditors, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, ayes have it.
Mr. Chair, I have my own report.
What's the one more? What's the...
Four.
Where's the fourth one? I've had it here.
Creates an expense line for the rental.
Do you have it?
Go in four, I think.
Oh, okay, it was stuck together, I beg your pardon. There's one more. Fiscal year 19 road fund, approve the budget, creates an expense line for a new equipment rental. Request a motion. Thank you for picking that up.
I thought there was one missing.
So moved.
Yeah, motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, they all voted aye, including Sue.
Are you voting? Are you voting or not?
I'm abstaining.
Nelson likes to make sure that he can run for any office later, so he doesn't wanna[1720.62]